Good evening. I'd like to call this August 7th, 2025 Kenton County Planning Commission Regent meeting to order. Please stand for our pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you'll be standing for our invocation, please.
As we, the members of this commission, gather here today, we ask that we're ever mindful of opportunities to render service to our fellow citizens and to our community. Let's continue to strive to make a better world by always keeping in mind the enduring values of life, and let us exert our efforts in those areas upon which future generations may build a confidence in.
Amen. All right. Thank you very much. All right. Mr. Smith, would you call the role?
Certainly. Commissioner Armbruster.
He is out.
Commissioner Baumgartner. Commissioner Burling.
Here.
Commissioner Bethel.
Here.
Commissioner Bridges.
Present.
Commissioner Derp. Commissioner DeAngelis.
Here.
Commissioner Dunham.
Here.
Commissioner France.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydrick.
Here.
Commissioner Herman.
Here.
Commissioner James.
Here.
Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Farr.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner Simpson.
Here.
Commissioner Sketch. Commissioner Snyder. Commissioner Vaughn. Commissioner Wickman.
Here.
We do have a court.
All right. Great. And in lieu of the video, at Commissioner Bridges' request, we'll do an abbreviated summary of our meeting procedures for this evening. So the meeting process is each item begins with me reading a description. The staff will present their facts and recommendations. The commission members are going to ask clarifying questions. Then we'll have public testimony. We'll start with the applicant and supporters, then the opponents, and finally neutral parties are those with questions. Rebuttal time may be given to the applicant and opponents. And then after testimony, the commission will recess to discuss the issue. No audience comments are permitted during the recess. The hearing may reopen for clarifications and then close for a motion and a vote. Subdivision of waiver decisions or final zoning map and text amendments are recommendations sent to elected officials. These elected officials make the final decision on map and text amendments. If you wish to speak, you must register at the back table. And let's see. When you come to the lectern, please state your name, address, and affiliation, and then speak clearly into the microphone. The meeting is recorded for cable TV. Let's see. I think that's it. All right. Okay. With that, let's see. You have in front of you our agenda. The one thing I would like, Sharmely, yeah, one thing I'd like to change in the agenda is after the ratification of appointments, I guess that's even before we're reviewing the agenda. Should we do the ratification now? Okay. All right. We're going to ratify the appointments of Ken Hydrick. Ken's the new City of Lakeside Park representative. And can we go ahead and ratify Doug as well? And then Doug Armbruster, who will be the representative for City of Elsmer. We'll entertain a motion to approve those appointments.
Just don't move.
First by Commissioner Bethel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wickman. Do we? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much. Do we need to swear in Ken now?
Swear now.
Okay. Great. He's over here to the end here next to Pamela.
We'll swear you in if you just raise your right hand. You solemnly swear affirm that in case maybe that you'll support the Constitution and the Commonwealth. Constitution of the United States, be faithful to the Commonwealth of Kentucky, as long as you continue to be a citizen thereof, and that you defend, protect, and execute the laws of the Commonwealth of Kentucky, and be faithfully executed to the best of your ability, the office commissioner of the Kenton County Planning Commission. According to law, do you further solemnly swear affirm that since the adoption of the present Constitution, being a citizen of the United States, have not fallen into war with deadly weapons within the state nor out of it, nor have you sent or accepted the challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have you acted as a second in carrying out a challenge for either assistant or a person that's pending, so I'll do that.
All right.
Can you just sign this for me?
That's the same one that we talked about? I forgot all those tools I did.
Let's see. All right. The next is the review of this month's agenda. I'd like to propose that we add ahead of the meeting minutes review, so right after this, we recognize Sharmely Reddy and Josh Weiss also wants to make some comments. Is there a motion to amend the agenda to permit those comments?
I have a motion to amend the agenda.
First by Commissioner Simpson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Ms. Reddy.
Thank you, Chairman Dunham. I know there's a couple new faces, so in case you're wondering who is this. My name is Sharmely Reddy, and I just stepped down last Friday as the Executive Director of PDS. I've accepted a new position as the city manager for the city of Covington. So I will be starting that job on August 18th. But I wanted to be before you to really thank you for your support of PDS. I was here before for 10 years, and then I left for some time, and then I came back to lead this agency in my role as Executive Director. And I always, always felt that the Planning Commission is by far one of the most professional and very well-run meetings that you will ever see around the county. And you all are so respectful of public comments and how you treat the public, and we've always been proud to be a part of this process with you. So I really wanted to be here to thank you for your support of our staff, who is extremely professional. And I think I can say that as a fellow planner, that, you know, our hearts have always come from the right place for this community. So I hope you feel that. I hope that what we've tried to do the last five years here has been good in realigning our mission to what we were created for. And I hope you feel, you felt the professional support from our staff, and we'll continue to do that. But also, many of you have supported me personally through my professional journey. So thank you all so much for that. I know we will be seeing our Covington reps more, but I hope that our paths continue to cross in some capacity. So really just wanted to be here to thank you and let you know that you're going to be in really good hands with Josh Weiss, who is taking over, who has taken over, who has taken over as the Executive Director for PDS. So thank you.
Good luck, Sharmely.
Yeah.
Paul's starting for you, Mark.
Yeah. I mean, for those who don't know Sharmely very well, I mean, she is the gold standard for city administration, governmental agency administration. She, it is a hard job balancing all of the things you have to do, and she's the best. And so we're sorry to see you go. We're, you know, the city of Covington is such an important piece of Kenton County and this region, and what happens in Covington is good, could be good or bad for the region. And so we're excited what Mayor Washington's doing there. I understand exactly why he wanted to get you to join him in this mission, and I think you guys are going to do a great job, and I'm thankful for your service to the city. So thank you.
Good luck, Sharmely.
Anybody else have to?
Sharmely, could you repeat that because you're supposed to give your name and address?
[laughing]
Thank you for everything.
Yeah. Thanks. Thanks. Josh, you want to say anything?
A hard act to follow tonight, but also a hard act to follow from the previous five years. So for those of you who don't know me, I am Josh Weiss in day four as Executive Director for Planning and Development Services. I joined the organization about four years ago to help build the community development program that the PDS Management Board created at the time. So it is a service to the county and all of our cities to focus on their development and redevelopment efforts. My background, I've worked with many of you. I've been before you before with this body for various presentations, but also have worked as I look at faces in various ways even before I joined PDS. I also have a background in city administration and local economic development, as well as regional economic development. And I look forward to continuing what Sharmely started. We have a great staff in our planning team that works with you on a very frequent basis, but know that I'm always available and look forward, for those of you who I don't know that well, look forward to working with you even more. So thank you.
Great. Thanks. And then I've known Josh for many years prior to PDS, and he's awesome at what he does. I feel we're very lucky that, to have you in this role, and it's awesome that you were, you know, kind of already in PDS and working in that role for the time you were. It's going to make the transition really smooth. And, you know, the good news is, I think, over the history of KCPC, we're, in the PDS relationship, I don't know if it's ever been better. And Sharmely's done a great job bringing that to this point. And so I think it's going to make for a nice transition. We're excited about working with you, your team. Thanks, Josh. All right. Okay. So the next item of business is the review of the July 8th meeting minutes. That was a special meeting, as you recall. Did anybody have any questions or comments? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve those.
We'll move to approve.
First by Commissioner Bridges.
Second.
Let's see. Second by Commissioner Herman. Would you call the role, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Bridges.
Yes.
Commissioner Herman.
Yes.
Commissioner James.
Yes.
Commissioner Martin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan.
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson.
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder.
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn.
Yes.
Commissioner Wickman.
Yes.
Commissioner Burling.
Yes.
Commissioner Bethel.
Yes.
Commissioner DeAngelis.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunham.
Yes.
Commissioner France.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydrick.
Yes.
They're approved.
All right. Next item is reports of receipts and expenditures. Any questions for staff or treasurer? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve those.
I'll make a motion to approve receipts and expenditures.
First by Commissioner Ryan.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Snyder. Can we do it by confirmation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The report of last month's actions by staff. Any questions? Report of last month's actions by our legislative bodies. We just had the one, that was the city of Crescent Springs, and we recommended approval, and they also voted in favor of that. So that brings us to our public hearing portion of the meeting. We have file number PC-25-0008, Fort Wright map amendment. The applicant is Carlson Consulting Engineers, Inc., per Jared Hutchinson, on behalf of H. L. Scott Jr. Trustee. The location is 3450 Valley Plaza Parkway, Fort Wright, an area of approximately 24.84 acres located along the west side of Valley Plaza Parkway between Viewpoint Drive and Highland Pike. The request is an amended concept development plan within a PUD, Planned Unit Development Zone, of the Fort Wright zoning ordinance. The applicant was recently approved for an amended concept development plan for a 4,973-square-foot expansion and changes to the parking lot. They are now seeking to increase this expansion to 8,146 square feet, which will create the need for additional alterations to the parking lot. Mr. Denbo?
Thank you very much. And for the record, I am Patrick Denbo, Senior Planner with PDS Staff. So as was stated, the applicant is proposing an amended concept development plan for the Walmart site in Fort Wright. And just as a reminder, Fort Wright has adopted the alternative procedures for map amendments, so the Planning Commission recommendation will become final after 21 days unless someone files an appeal form requesting that the Fort Wright City Council take final action. And we do have that form available on the sign-in table. The site is located in the first string suburban subarea of the comprehensive plan. The site contains the existing Walmart supercenter with associated parking, and the surrounding area is largely built out with commercial and restaurant uses. The area to the north and west of the site contains single-family residential. This is a view looking northeast along Valley Plaza Parkway from the southern access point into Walmart. Then this is a view looking towards the existing Walmart. So this corner of the building is, if you recall from the previous request, the location of the expansion. And then this is a view looking northwest along Valley Plaza Parkway from the northern access point. Google Street, I'm sorry, Google Earth view of the Walmart property. Madison Pike's located in the foreground. Valley Plaza Parkway is located in between the Walmart property and the outlots. And the proposed addition and parking lot changes will be roughly within that red circle. So from his, some history again. So in 2000, Fort Wright City Council voted to override a recommendation from the KCPC and denied a stage one development plan for the site in question. There was a subsequent appeal through the Kenton County Circuit Court, and a settlement was reached. And Fort Wright City Council subsequently adopted an ordinance approving a stage one development plan. In 2004, City of Fort Wright adopted a stage two development plan for the Walmart. And then in 2005, another stage two was adopted for the Walmart with two conditions. And then in June of this year, the applicant was approved for an amended stage one development plan for a 4,973-square-foot addition with changes to the parking lot. Subsequent to the approval, the applicant expressed the desire to further amend the plan in order to allow for a larger expansion. The site and all the adjacent parcels are currently zoned PUD. There are areas of single-family located to the west. Existing land use is commercial and open space. Surrounding land uses are mostly commercial and office. Valley Plaza Parkway is classified as a local street. Highland Park, or I'm sorry, Highland Pike is classified as a minor arterial, and Madison Pike is classified as a major arterial. Orphanage Road is classified as a major collector. There are sidewalks existing along both sides of Valley Plaza Parkway, and Tank does operate bus routes. The existing conditions include a 183,917-square-foot Walmart supercenter with 831 total off-street parking spaces. As a reminder, this was the amended concept plan that you saw a couple months ago. And this is the proposed change to that. So I'll kind of toggle a little bit so you can see that. This was what was approved before, and this is the new. Doing some closer detail of this area, existing Walmart is outlined in orange for your reference. The proposed building addition is being shown in red, which will remove approximately 33 existing parking spaces. The plan also includes a dedication of 45 parking spaces for pickup-only. These are shown in yellow. Each space will be 19 feet by 10 feet, and the drive aisles will be a minimum of 25 feet. Each of the 45 spaces will include a sign indicating that they are for pickup only, and that's shown in the green. And as was the case with the last plan, there will be two spaces for EV charging stations for the Walmart delivery vans. And there will be signage saying that's for their vans only. And the plan also includes the addition of sidewalks that are shown in blue. Just another thing to point out, the map amendment, or I'm sorry, the amended concept plan will alter circulation patterns by the elimination of the drive aisle closest to the existing building. But circulation will be maintained via a new 25-foot-wide drive aisle that connects to the adjacent drive, and that's shown there in the red. They are showing stop bars too for safety. And as was the case with the previous request, this plan will also include the general restriping of all paved areas on the lot, repainting the existing parking lot light pole bases, repainting existing signpost bollards. And the plan includes a note that existing and proposed elevation designs to conform to all city requirements from the design guidelines. Details to follow in the future final development plan review. And then this is just a summary of the key changes. So of note, the building addition again is being increased from just under 5,000 square feet to just over 8,100 square feet. The total parking spaces will decrease from 804 in the previously approved version of the plan to 774 in the proposed plan. And the total number of pickup-only spaces will increase from 31 to 45 spaces. The required number of parking spaces will increase by 10 due to the increased square footage, and that will increase the required number of parking spaces to 640. So they are still well above that requirement. Staff conducted a full review of the comprehensive plan and finds areas of consistency. The proposed development will promote a business-friendly environment that will help to maintain the quality of an existing commercial area by promoting means to maintain its vitality. The proposed development is consistent with the recommended land use, which identifies the site for commercial. The development will help to strengthen the existing commercial business. And the rear portion of the site contains areas of DSA. However, the proposed development will not be located within this area. KRS 100 states that a map amendment must be in agreement with the comprehensive plan, or that the existing zoning classification is inappropriate, or that there have been major changes that were not anticipated in the adopted plan. The proposed amended concept development plan is generally consistent with the Kenton County comprehensive plan. The project will maintain the vitality of an existing commercial development while promoting the business-friendly environment. And the proposed concept development plan is generally consistent with the requirements of the Fort Wright zoning ordinance. And while not required on the concept development plan, if approved, there will be additional information needed with future final development plans, including conforming to the design guidelines, site lighting, landscaping, excavation, grading, movement of soil, and erosion, sedimental, sedimentation control, and signage. Well, all of that requires a final development plan. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Denbo?
Mr. Denbo, just, and it's probably for the applicant. What happened in such a short period of time? The 21-day period expired. Nobody said anything, and then all of a sudden we're doubling the size of something. Just...
Yeah, I will defer to the applicant for details. It's my understanding that some industry standards changed regarding these types of facilities. Just kind of happened in the middle of the process for them.
And just a question, too, and it might be an ignorant one. A map amendment. How does that, we're not changing, we're just, the square footage requires a map amendment?
So the, an amended concept development plan goes through the same process.
Okay.
So the original concept development plan, or stage one at that time way back when, would have been associated with the map amendment. So any change to that goes through the same process as a map amendment.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thanks, Patrick.
You're welcome.
All right. I have two folks signed up to speak. Is it Ben Barr or Ben Van?
Bach.
Bach? Are you here to speak on this matter? On the, I see your note, stage two development plan is...
It was, I'm not sure if I can speak to that. I just have some questions.
We can, we can cover that in the public comment section at the end of the meeting. And then I have Jared Hutchinson with Carlson Consulting.
I don't really have those. I just...
If you could go to the mic and state your name and address for the...
My name is Jared Hutchinson, and I'm with Carlson Consulting Engineers. We're out of 7068 Ledgestone Commons, Bartlett, Tennessee. And your question was in regards to, I guess, the reasoning behind the increase in such a short time. I can't really speak to that either. We're just kind of reached out to and said, hey, we want it this size. So that's really kind of all I know at this time. But it's been a frequent occurrence for them to do that, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Hutchinson? Okay. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Appreciate you being here. Okay. Let's see. We'll recess the public hearing for discussion among commissioners. I mean, it's still relatively small proportion of the building there and the increase. They still have plenty of excess parking. It's going to better serve the customer and, you know, the people in the neighborhood, and it's totally appropriate for that type of use there. So I have zero issues with it. Anybody have any other thoughts?
I would consider it somewhat a minor change. I know it doubles the size of the previously planned expansion, but compared to the overall facility, I don't think it's a big change.
Great.
Nobody seems to care.
Yeah. Times have changed since way back when, when this has passed. Yeah. All right. Well, the whole project has passed.
We care. Everybody, general public does not care.
Yeah. All right. Let's return to the public hearing. Any clarifications needed of the staff or the applicant? Not, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
With regard to file number PC-250008, applicant Carlson Consulting Engineers, regarding the location of 3450 Valley Plaza Parkway, Fort Wright, the approximate area of 24.8 acres, located west of side of Valley Plaza Parkway between Viewpoint Drive and Highland Pike. I move that we approve the map amendment to modify the previously approved concept development plan to an expansion of 8146 square feet with the modifications to the parking lot and parking spaces to 640 spaces with 774 spaces available. And that's based on the consistency with the comprehensive plan, staff's finding and favorable recommendation, and the consistency with the recommended land use.
I'll second.
All right. We had, first by Commissioner Burling, and second by Commissioner DeAngelis. Would you call the role, please?
Commissioner Burling.
Yes.
Commissioner DeAngelis.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunham.
Yes.
Commissioner France.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Herman.
Yes.
Commissioner James.
Yes.
Commissioner Martin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan.
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson.
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder.
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn.
Yes.
Commissioner Wickman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bethel.
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges.
Yes.
And it is approved.
All right. Thank you very much. Good luck with the project. Thanks for being here. The next item is the Ludlow text amendment. They've requested to table the matter. So it's going to be pushed, I believe, maybe to the next meeting. So...
They're hoping that one more month.
What?
Hoping for next month.
Just one more month.
Didn't we do that last month as well?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think it was pretty...
Oh, so, all right. So we have to approve the request to table for up to six months? So is her motion?
I just move.
All right.
Since we all retabled at once, would it be five months?
I didn't, I forgot that we had tabled it previously. So we table, we table it last go-around for a month?
Yeah.
Well, actually...
How long we tabled it for?
Yeah, I'm sure we probably tabled it for the six. Let's, just to be safe, let's do it for five, five months?
I just move.
All right. First by Commissioner Vaughn.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much. Next is reports from committees. Direction 2030 implementation.
Just, like I said, it's been pretty light. We do have a meeting on Tuesday to discuss the benchmarks. And so we have already drafted an agenda, or an agenda will be resent out in the morning, just a reminder. It's been a couple months since we've met. And also we'll talk about, in that meeting, we'll talk about the housing consultant and the updates that they are reviewing, GIS data that was sent to them.
All right. Thanks, Commissioner Simpson. Executive, I will refer... Executive, I will first.
If I could just make a comment on, I see for the executive committee and for the Z21 Review Committee, it's a nice idea for, for efficiency to look at approving those minutes for the committees, but since this is a regular meeting of the Planning Commission, the executive committee and the Z21 Committee can't act because it's not a special or regular meeting of the executive committee or the Z21 Committee. So I recommend that those minutes be approved at the next meeting of those respective committees.
All right. Duly noted. Duly noted. The other thing, I guess, on executive, I just want to welcome Ken Heidrich to the Planning Commission. We're very excited to have him join us from the city of Lakeside Park, and then Doug Armbruster has also been appointed by the city of Elsmere. He was, had to fly out of town, but he'll be at the next meeting. We're two quality men who are just really wanting to give back to their community, and we're thankful for their service. Ken, if you have anything you want to say?
I'm happy to join. I just finished a 30-plus-year career with State Farm Insurance, retired from that. But if I go back about 30 years, I was a city councilman for Fort Wright for four, five years, and I was a volunteer fire chief for four, five years before that, so I've got a little city government under my belt, but I'd be at three decades ago, so I'm looking forward to serving again.
All right. Thank you very much, Ken.
Okay.
That's all I've got. Subdivision review.
We did not meet.
Okay. Z21.
We did not meet and are not going to approve our minutes.
Okay. Reports from commission members?
I do have something to say.
Sure. Commissioner Bethel?
I got, we were on vacation down in Savannah. I got a phone call somewhere soon once that I know, asking me, what are you texting? I have been hacked. My computer had been hacked. And one thing I did note on the computer is that they tried to get into the PDS files. I get a notification on that. I, of course, immediately called Pam and let her know what was going on, and she took care of things on that end, but I just wanted to caution everybody. I'm having all my computers taken care of and cleaned and so forth, so. And I did hear when I went down to talk to the computer people that hacking has gone up substantially, so just want to caution everybody, because I don't want to go through this too many times. There's too much to do. So I wanted to go ahead and give that word of caution advice, however you want to put it, to everybody.
Yeah, it's a real problem.
Yeah, it is.
Just a question, Commissioner Bethel. Could you please see that you returned the $50,000 I sent you?
What 50,000? I have no knowledge of that.
All the gift cards we bought you and sent you.
Well, that's one of the things they were asking for. How'd you know that?
Yeah.
Just saying.
Where are the skins? Victim's side, not.
Help me out here, Pam.
Any other reports from commission members? Report from legal counsel?
Nothing to report.
Reports or announcements from staff?
You have one, and I'm actually going to let Pamela speak to this.
This is just a new virtual training that the Kentucky League of Cities is putting on. You guys do have budget money for training. It's a four-hour virtual class on October 29th from 10:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m., planning and zoning training through KLC. If you want to attend, send me an email, let me know, and I will get you registered. As you know, the CE requirements just changed, and now you don't have, they give you four years to get your CE in, and, I mean, this takes care of half of it for a lot of you, so.
I'll just add that, you know, the Kentucky League of Cities, they do a great job in my experience, and their training and the seminars that I've been to that they put on are about as valuable as you can get because they are very focused on Kentucky law and the interplay of, you know, of not just, just generally planning and zoning, but really drills down into our state-specific considerations. So I highly recommend you all, if you can do it, to participate. I know that you'll find it valuable. Any other announcements?
No, that's it. We did mention it prior to the meeting, but we are also working on an updated video for the KCPC meetings, and as of right now, it's significantly shorter.
Okay.
So, to be seen.
Yep. Looking forward to that. Thank you. Let's see. General correspondence? I don't know, do we have anything in our packet?
There was none.
No, no general correspondence. Next item for new business is the appointment of Paul Darple, a non-voting member of the Kenton County Transportation Improvement District. So we get to make an appointment, excuse me. Previously, Sharm Lee was our appointment. What's interesting is the city of Covington also gets an appointment as well. I don't know if it's voting or not, but, so Sharm Lee will take the city of Covington, presumably will take the city of Covington appointment, so she'll, she'll also be looking at it through our lens, I'm sure, as well, but I would like to appoint Paul to fill what Sharm Lee was serving, so.
Are you appointing Paul because he's not here today?
No. I did talk to Paul, and he was very interested in serving, and it, he's got a great skillset for it, and so. So we'll entertain a motion?
I will make that motion to appoint Paul Darple to the Kenton County Transportation Improvement District.
All right. First by Commissioner Vaughn, oh, second by Commissioner Snyder. She beat you to it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then review and approval of continuing education submission?
Before, before you start, I just, we don't need to approve it. I'm going to go ahead and take that off the.
Okay. All right.
It does not need to be.
So we'll, we'll take no action on that one. Thanks, Commissioner Simpson.
Commissioner Simpson, any reason?
There's, there's opportunity, there's ample opportunity to get CE through. That's actually a little bit closer to what we're doing, and also, so I think I'm going to take that opportunity to do that.
Sounds good.
As we have in the past, we've usually approved a lot of the.
I understand.
You would have had to give us an opposite for all your classes.
I didn't want to do that. That's what, but I appreciate it.
I love having Phil here. All right, so I, sir, I, let's see, Ben, I forgot your.
Mr. Bach.
Bach, Mr. Bach. If you'd like to make comments for the public comment section, if you'd state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Benjamin Bach, 10112 Meadow Glen Drive in Independence. I was, thanks for letting me speak. I'm just sort of more of an informational, educational process for myself of, sort of, I'm just a bill, but I'm just trying to learn about zoning and, and things and being, educate myself. For, it wasn't addressed during the meeting, but the section of stage two for the development off of Harris Pike, is there, how many stages are there when discussion points about that come up? Sorry, press the screen. Is there, what's the process there for discussing the topics in that letter thing? I saw it on the now pending.
Right.
Is there anything to add to that, or?
Yeah, we can have Patrick respond to that, but at the stage two, it doesn't come before us. We do a general approval of, you know, the zoning project, and then stage two is kind of more of the fine-tooth sort of details, and, and that's reviewed and approved at the staff level.
Okay.
And so that would have been before Patrick and his colleagues there, so.
Okay. And so the more public version of that is stage one, is that, I'm understanding? How many, how many stages are there, just for my own application? Can you go ahead?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, so the, the, kind of the vocabulary, we use a stage one, stage two, but that, that's essentially a concept plan, and then there's final plans that are submitted after the fact. So the concept plan, or the stage one in this case, came before the Planning Commission and then ultimately fiscal court in that case, because it's outside of Independence, for the public process, and that was part of the zoning change. And then the subsequent final development plans or stage twos, it's however many phases they break up their project into. This was the first phase of it. However many phases, I'm not quite sure how many there will be, but it's to build out essentially what was submitted as part of the public process. And what we do is review it to make sure it's consistent with what was shown with the public process with the original approval.
You're also able to file an Open Records Act request for details on, on the, you know, the plan and the process, and so if that helps you as well, and I'm sure they're happy to, to discuss it with you, so.
Yeah, feel free to contact us.
If I have questions about individual mine, I have to refer, I would be helping with the U.S. PDS on various specifications of all that.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Thanks for being here, Mr. Bach. All right. Let's see, I don't have anything else unless, nope. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
I still move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.